Well, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem City Council for October 18th to order. This is a special meeting of the city council in joint session with the city planning commission. We'll be talking about the three-year project we've been launched in on the new Salem comprehensive plan. So I'm going to ask that there be a roll call. Shelby?
Yep. Hi, Councilor Stapleton?
Here.
Councilor Anderson is absent. Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Councilor LeYoung?
Here.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Nordike? Councilor Nordike?
Nordike is here.
I think I saw her earlier. Councilor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here.
And going to the planning commissioners, Commissioner Augustine, I believe, informed us that he would be a little late tonight. Commissioner Goble?
Here.
Commissioner Griggs?
Here.
Commissioner Heller?
Here.
Commissioner Copcho?
I'm here.
Commissioner Levin?
Here.
Commissioner McKinley?
Here.
Commissioner Pollak?
Here.
And Commissioner Slater?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Hoy, could you give us the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, counselor. And approval of the special meeting agenda?
I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Okay, we'll call roll on that.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor LeYoung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And approval of additions and deletions, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Lewis.
Thank you. For item 2A, we have a corrected proposed zoning map attached.
Okay, if the, any questions, comments, I'll write if the, if Shelby, would you call the roll?
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor LeYoung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move forward. I'm going to turn this over to Lisa Anderson Olgaby and Eunice Kim, who've been leading the Our Salem Project to sort of set the stage and get us going on this, on this evening's agenda. So Lisa, you want to go first?
Great, sure. Hi, I'm Lisa Anderson Olgaby, your planning administrator. Thank you for joining us tonight for this joint work session for Our Salem. We're very excited to be here tonight. I will just turn it over to Eunice Kim, the project manager, and she's going to introduce the rest of the staff that are with us tonight to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, where are, or Eunice, where are you?
I'm here.
There she is.
I'm Eunice Kim, long-range planning manager for the city of Salem, also a planning manager for the Our Salem Project. With me today is Lisa, who introduces herself, Norman Wright, the community development director, Austin Ross, long-range planner, Julie Warnicki, the transportation planning manager, Patricia Farrell, the natural resources planning manager, and Annie Gorsky, who's going to join us with urban development, the economic development manager. So tonight, as Lisa mentioned, we're going to be giving an update on the Our Salem Project. Specifically, we're going to be presenting the results of that three-year project. We're not asking for a vote tonight, but we will be happy to answer any questions you have. So I'm going to share my screen.
As you're putting up your screen, I want to remind people that if your camera's not on, you essentially are not here as the public is watching this. So bear that in mind as you decide to turn off your camera. Okay, go ahead, Eunice, sorry.
So the Our Salem Project, as a reminder, is a multi-year project to update what's known as our comprehensive plan. Those are, it includes the goals, the policies, and the maps that guide how we grow and develop in the future, the next 10, 20, 30 years. The Our Salem Project has been a multi-year project. It kicked off in 2018 with three phases. The first phase really focused on the existing conditions of the community in the city. The second phase was a visioning process, and that was community-wide. And that phase really ended in March when we presented the vision document to the city council and asked for acceptance. And we're in the third phase now, where we're now taking all of that work and looking to update the comprehensive plan. Through all phases of the project, we've been doing extensive outreach in the community. We've attended more than 230 meetings and events, engaged more than 80 community groups. And while we've been doing this outreach, we've been trying to make sure that we hear from the perspectives across the community, understanding we're not going to be able to speak to every single person. We've been very intentional in our outreach to make sure that we are reaching out to folks who maybe aren't traditionally involved in planning projects, like our communities of color, maybe our lower-income residents, renters, people with disabilities, et cetera. Since the vision document was accepted by the council in March, we have continued to do outreach. We didn't stop with the vision, but we've been doing outreach on all of the details of the project. So we've had weekly policy meetings, we had a zoning subcommittee meeting, interactive maps, surveys, community events. And so we've just kind of continued that outreach throughout the project. And again, we're going to present the results to you. So the main components of the project that we're going to present tonight are the comprehensive plan document. That's a document that includes the goals and policies that will guide growth and development in the future, proposed comprehensive plan map, and a associated zoning map that I'll spin a little bit, and proposed code amendments that will actually help us implement the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. All of these results align and advance the vision that we presented to the council back in March. So this vision statement is included in the updated draft comprehensive plan. It really represents the shared priorities that we've heard in the community throughout this outreach project, including affordable housing, support for local businesses, diversity, culture, and neighborhood. The results also address community priorities. A lot of these priorities have been longstanding priorities, like supporting local businesses. But other priorities have really become the focus in more recent years. Some of those priorities include our housing needs, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and then advancing that goal. So first, I'm going to present the draft comprehensive plan. There's many chapters, many topics that are covered in the draft comprehensive plan. I'm not going to cover it all. I'm going to give some examples. But it really does reach a broad range of topics, from housing to economic development to transportation and community services. These are the topics that were also included in the vision document from this spring. With one thing I wanted to note is that we did break out climate change as its own separate topic. So one of the topics that has been a priority in the community, and you'll see it throughout the comprehensive plan, is the idea of equity and community engagement. We have a lot of policies around equity and community engagement that really look to make sure we're embedding equity in both how we do our work and how we engage the community, as well as the results of our work. These are policies that don't exist today in our comprehensive plan and are much more expansive than anything that we had in the past. So you'll see here examples of community engagement policies about expanding opportunities for underrepresented groups to really participate in our work, and ensuring the results of our work extend benefits to and don't negatively impact underrepresented groups more than others. And so while there's a chapter on community engagement and equity, you'll see equity throughout our policies and throughout the other topics. We have a variety of housing goals as well. They really focus on the location, the types of housing, and housing affordability. One of the goals on housing gets to this idea of complete neighborhoods. We've heard throughout the process that people really want to be able to live where they can walk conveniently to shops, services, jobs, and amenities. And so you'll see that goal there in the housing. The policies are much more detailed. So you'll see, for example, that we have a draft policy on where we want to see higher-density housing, and that's near Chariot's core network. I'll reference Chariot's core network quite a bit tonight, so just to explain what it is. Chariot's core network is really the network of major routes that Chariot has frequent service on today and has committed to keeping and increasing service in the future. So a lot of our planning has been around this core network. So I just wanted to explain what that is. Other policies around housing have to do with making sure we have a broad range of options, from sheltering all the way through housing. And then, of course, we have ideas around green building, as we've been talking about reducing greenhouse gas emission. We also have a variety of goals related to economic development, everything from strengthening our economy, but also making sure that people have access to jobs and the training they need for those jobs. It's also been a priority of the city and of the community to make sure we have the land that we need to support future growth. So you'll see, for example, a draft policy about making sure we have a long-term supply of industrial land. We also have policies around design, both in this chapter and others, to make sure that development, as it occurs, is pedestrian-friendly. So this is the new chapter on climate change and natural hazards. This is the goal around greenhouse gas reductions that the council adopted last year, essentially trying to be carbon moved by 2050. The goals around climate change and natural hazards really have to do with reducing greenhouse gas emissions, adapting to changes in our future, and making sure we can bounce back and we're resilient as a community when climate change impacts are felt and when natural hazards occur in the future. What we did related to climate change, we worked really closely with the Climate Action Plan and that project team to make sure that we could take all of the draft strategies from that plan and roll them up into policies, higher-level policies. And we got draft plan came out and was released to the public today. So you'll see a lot of overlap between those strategies and these policies. So as an example, there are policies around making sure we have the infrastructure for electric vehicles, reducing the amount of waste that we produce, and really tracking and reporting on greenhouse gas emission. The other major component of this project has been the comprehensive plan map. This is the higher-level map that really shows where the community wants to see different types of development in the future. So the comprehensive plan map, again, is high-level. So instead of saying our more detailed zoning that you're maybe familiar with, it just says this is where we generally want to see commercial development, industrial development, residential development. This is the map that we brought forward in the vision document in March. Since March, we've also worked on the more detailed zoning map. We, this is the detailed map that shows, instead of just commercial on the comprehensive plan level, it says like maybe commercial office or commercial retail, commercial general. This zoning map we released in the spring, and we made quite a few revisions based on comments that we got from the community. We had an interactive map where more than 1,500 comments were placed on it. Both the comprehensive plan map and the more detailed zoning map really try to accomplish our priorities that, again, we've heard in the community. So this map is looking to implement some of the goals and policies in that comprehensive plan document. I'm going to talk about three of those priorities: housing, mixed-use, and neighborhood. So we know, based on our housing needs analysis, we have a need for more multifamily land and multifamily housing. This map shows where our existing multifamily land is. What we've heard from the community is they want to make sure that new multifamily land is distributed across the community as opposed to being isolated or concentrated in one neighborhood. And so we've done that. This map shows the proposed additions of multifamily land in the community. We have made some changes since the spring, based on input again from the community. The changes, for example, could include going from a higher-density multifamily 2 zone to a lower-density multifamily 1 zone. But despite all of those changes that we have made, we are still projected to meet our need for multifamily housing units and land, based on the maps that we're presenting tonight. One of the other priorities we've heard is that the community wants to see more opportunities for mixed-use development. So this map shows our existing mixed-use land. And in Salem, when we talk about mixed-use, we're not talking about a requirement that someone develop your traditional mixed-use building, whether it's retail on the ground floor and housing above, like you might see in downtown or north downtown. We're really talking about flexibility in how people can develop their land. So in mixed-use land in Salem, we're talking about people can do housing, they can do offices, retail, restaurants, or a combination if they elect to. This map shows our proposed additions to our mixed-use land. We're proposing to add roughly 1,600 acres of mixed-use land. And we have made some changes, again, based on input from the community. But you will see that when you kind of put those maps together, our existing mixed-use land and our proposed additions of mixed-use land, we have a lot of mixed-use land that's really concentrated along Chariot's core network. This is intentional, so more people have the opportunity to live near the bus service and also to live near where services are already existing, jobs, amenities, et cetera. The other topic we want to talk about is neighborhood hubs. This is an idea that came out of the outreach we've done as part of the Our Salem Project. And a neighborhood hub, as a reminder, would be a new zone that would be created in Salem that would allow, but not require, small-scale businesses in residential areas. So if you think about like a bookstore, or barber, or baker, or cafe, the idea is that these businesses would be allowed within this zone to help serve the surrounding neighborhoods. The idea is to, again, kind of create more complete neighborhoods, so people can walk to meet some of their daily needs without having to get into the car. We did introduce this idea earlier and initially proposed 34 locations. But based on input from the community, we have shrunk that down in our now-proposing 13. As it is a new zone that's being proposed, property owners can always apply to change their zoning, to allow this in the future if there's a location that we may have missed and was a good opportunity. But we're currently proposing 13 locations. So that new neighborhood hub zone is one of the code amendments that we're proposing to bring forward with the Our Salem Project. There are a few zones that we're proposing to add. And in addition, we're proposing to implement the recommendations of the zoning subcommittee in a code amendment. So again, the neighborhood hub zone is a new zone, would allow a mix of uses. But when we did the outreach in the community, we did hear that there are specific uses that neighborhoods did not want to see in their neighborhoods, such as liquor stores, tattoo parlors, marijuana sit-ins. So those types of uses, we are proposing to prohibit in the neighborhood hub zone. We're also proposing some standards to help make neighborhood hubs more compatible to neighborhoods. So for example, we're proposing to limit the hours of operation and require screening if the businesses, for example, is located next to a home. Another zone we're proposing to create is the mixed-use 3 zone. So today, we have a mixed-use 1 zone and a mixed-use 2 zone. This would be our third mixed-use zone. And it would largely be, again, located along Chariot's core network. It would allow similar uses to the commercial retail zone, which is largely along those major routes today. But the major difference is that multifamily housing would be allowed outright. So instead of having to go through a conditional use permit, which adds maybe time and cost to the process, multifamily housing can be developed and outplayed. Another difference is that the mixed-use 3 zone would add some pedestrian-friendly design standards. So for example, if there was a new development on Vacant Land, the parking lot would have to be behind or to the side of buildings. Building entrances would have to face the street, and there would have to be background floor windows. So majority of the rest of the zoning code amendments that we are proposing with the Our Salem Project come from the zoning subcommittee. That committee included four planning commissioners and four city councilors that were really focused on what can we do in the code itself to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, particularly from transportation. We know transportation is a major source of emissions in Salem. So we're looking at what can we do to promote more housing and more mixed-use near transit and near services. We know it's not enough just to have a goal that says we're going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, that we can actually take some steps to help implement that. And so that is what we're proposing to do. This very much aligns with the strategies in the Climate Action Plan that really, again, wants to focus growth around the community. So the first recommendation of the zoning subcommittee is to establish the maximum height in that new mixed-use 3 zone. Again, that mixed-use 3 zone would be largely along the core network. And the recommendation is to have a maximum height of 70 feet. As the committee wanted to make sure there was ample opportunity to create more housing along that core network, but was also sensitive to the fact that some of these areas are adjacent to residential areas. So they're proposing that the taller the buildings go, the further away they would need to be from residential properties. This is similar to what we do in the current mixed-use 4 zone. The subcommittee is also recommending increasing the minimum density in our mixed-use zones and our multifamily 2 zone. Today, the minimum density is 12 units per acre. The recommendation is to bump that to 15. That ensures that as land develops with housing, we get more housing, particularly in the locations where we want to see housing. They're also recommending establishing a minimum density of 15 units per acre in the single-family zones along, again, the core network. This would ensure that as vacant land develops or land is redeveloped, there's opportunities for middle housing. Another recommendation is to eliminate the minimum parking requirements for mixed-use development in the mixed-use zones within a quarter mile of the core network. That's all to say, this idea that along the core network today, there's a lot of existing commercial uses and large parking lots. If we were to follow through with this recommendation, which we are recommending, a lot of those parking lots could have housing that's kind of infilled into those locations because those parking spots would no longer be required to meet any sort of commercial use. So the idea is to promote redevelopment and to promote infill housing, again, along the corner. Another recommendation from the zoning subcommittee is really looking at larger subdivisions. The first one is to allow, but not require, neighborhood hub uses in subdivisions that are at least 10 acres in size. The idea is that as our land on the edges, our vacant land, is developed, if there are subdivisions that are large, allowing a neighborhood hub use, again, bookstore, barber, et cetera, to exist in that subdivision allows for the opportunity of complete neighborhoods. So again, people can walk to meet some of their daily needs. You could still do single-family homes. It's not saying you have to develop a business, but it allows the opportunity in the future. The other recommendation is to establish a minimum density of 5 and 1/2 units per acre. And again, subdivisions that are at least 5 acres in size. Today, we don't have a minimum density. When you do a subdivision, you could have one home on a large lot. This requires, this ensures that we are fully utilizing our land. And it also ensures that middle housing, whether duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, are incorporated into those subdivisions. The recommendation is that at least 15% of the units that are developed in these larger subdivisions are of that type of middle housing. This kind of promotes the idea of a mix of housing types, more affordable housing types, along with single-family. Another thing we're doing to make sure that we're kind of moving towards the greenhouse gas reduction goals is to actually set benchmarks and say where we want to see housing and how much housing in what location. What we're trying to do is, again, reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation by setting these benchmarks. This graphic is basically showing, saying, we want to concentrate our new housing along the core network in our downtown and in our mixed-use areas, again, in alignment with the Climate Action Plan. This map just shows kind of all the colored areas are the areas where we want to see housing in the future. So along our major streets, in the downtown and inner core, in the mixed-use areas. This will help us kind of track and actually monitor where is our housing occurring? Are there, you know, changes we need to make if we're not meeting those targets, or are we on track? So we plan to bring this whole thing through the adoption process together, the package, the comp plan document, the maps, the zoning code amendments, and the housing needs analysis. We anticipate initiating, so just kicking off the adoption process by the end of the year with public hearings next year at the planning commission and city council. After all of that's done, there's a lot more work to actually implement and advance the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. We've talked before about the need to really update major components of that plan, so the transportation system plan, comprehensive parks master plan. There's also just other work, including looking at other climate action strategies that we plan to start and initiate after Our Salem. We will bring back more details in terms of a timeline, kind of a sequencing of events, potential cost estimates, who's leading, what departments would lead that. And we plan to bring that information back at the next work session, next month, on the policy agenda. And that wraps up my presentation.
Very good, Eunice. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Eunice or comments? Yeah, Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, real quick, thanks, Eunice. If you could go back, I'm not sure which page it's on, between 35 and 39, where it looks like there's going to be a requirement for 15%. So anytime I see language that makes it clear we're going to require a certain type of development, I'm always curious whether the folks that build the homes under those conditions have spoken up and what are they saying?
Yes. That requirement to have 15% of units in subdivisions greater than 5 acres came out of that zoning subcommittee meeting. We did talk very much so to the home builders. We worked with them. They came to that meeting and discussed all of the different kind of pros and cons to that. And after all of that discussion, the committee recommended that. So we've been working very closely with the home builders.
Jiminy?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that answers my question. Would, so let me put it this way, are the home builders all in, or do they have concerns about the requirement?
I think they were pretty clear that they think that middle housing is desired in the community and there will be market for it. They had proposed the 15% or some sort of requirement for middle housing as opposed to higher density. And so we've kind of gone back and forth on how can we get the type of housing that we want in subdivisions? And they thought the 15% would at least allow them to meet that in a different way. So they could do duplexes, they could do triplexes, or they could do townhouses, and they could scatter that how they wanted. And so they thought it at least provided flexibility.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Chain, Griggs?
Yep. I have a clarification and then just a quick follow-up on Councilor Lewis's concern. I think the other part of the equation that was troublesome for the home builders association and some of the developers was the requirement for the number of trees that have to go. That conflict, you want a lot of trees, but you want density, how do we make that work? So in full disclosure, I think, Councilor Lewis, that was an issue raised. My clarification was that the parking requirement, or that that change in the mixed-use within a quarter mile of the core network is not required. So it allows them to not provide parking, but if they see that there's a market demand for parking in their development, they can provide it, correct?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. It allows the market to essentially determine the amount of parking that's provided.
Thanks.
Daisy Goble?
Hi there. I just have a quick question, kind of along those same lines as well. But so with the increase in the minimum density specifically, I'm curious what the discussion is or why the maximum density isn't proposed to be increased?
Thanks for that question. We are proposing to increase the maximum density along with the minimum density going up. For, are you referring to the, in the mixed-use zones and that 2 zone? Yes. We don't want to crunch it so that, you know, you can only do a certain amount. So we're proposing to move the whole thing up.
Do you know, so the current max, I think, is 28. Do you know what the maximum that's proposed is?
It would be 31, at least in the RM2 zone, because basically we're adding 3 to both sides. The mixed-use zones do not have a maximum density. So those zones, you can build as much as you can fit.
And then also the increased density in the subdivisions, will the maximum density be increased there as well?
We don't have a maximum density.
Okay, thank you.
Eunice, could you do me a favor for the public and others? Maximum-minimum density, could you kind of translate that into what that means in terms of neighborhood impacts? What's that look like? What are we, what are we proposing here?
Sure. So a minimum density essentially means you have to develop a certain number of units. of units based on the size of your land. The more land that you have, the more units you have to provide or develop. Maximum density would be, you can't build over a certain amount, basically based on the size of your property. When we established or recommended the 5.5 units per acre, we did look at previous subdivisions that have been built and approved in recent years. We worked with the builders to see what was reasonable as opposed to something that they just couldn't meet. And so the idea is that this would, this would push a little, right? So that we get some middle housing. The whole point of it is to push to where, to where we're getting the type of housing that we would like as a community without, without breaking the system.
What, what would be a good example of something on the ground today that demonstrates a maximum density strategy? And I'm thinking maybe the downtown apartment house or something like that. What is the, what, what would this look like if folks had one show up in their neck of the woods here?
So if we're talking about the densities with multifamily housing,
Yeah.
I think that we're, we're largely building more than 15 units per acre. And what we've seen more recently, we see 20, 21 units per acre in our multifamily developments. So it is what you're traditionally seeing now with our developments.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I think, I think sometimes these, these terms, I think we all want to be careful of them is be, be sure to, as you hear them, Eunice, if you could kind of translate them too into on the ground, what they mean, it would be helpful. Michael, did I see you Slater?
Yeah.
Raise your hand.
You did. I have a question. So I understand that we need really six, between six and eight units per acre for viable transit, bus transit service. And I'm wondering if we've given some consideration when we looked at density on how not only can we increase density, but how can we can increase density to the size where we can support bus transit? Have you looked at those two items together?
Yes. Did you say six units per acre?
Six to eight is what I read. It's kind of the base amount that can sustain a bus system.
Sure, yes. And so we are proposing 15 units per acre along the core network. This is also a requirement that we expect coming down from the state as they're looking at what they call climate friendly areas. So we think that the state is going to require us to have that minimum density of 15 units per acre.
I guess my question was more along the lines of if we limit residential housing density to 5.5, we're not going to be creating the market that would allow the bus routes to expand beyond the core network, which I think is what we want to do. We want to get people to stop driving as much.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, that's a good question. We are looking at establishing mixed use areas and multifamily outside of just the core network. So there are large spots of land in Salem where it's all single family homes. And there are some vacant land where we're proposing again, like a mixed use one or two, that would have that minimum density of 15. So we will be working with Chariots because they are going to be kicking off their long range plan here. And we're, we're all on the technical advisory committee to really understand, you know, can we, and hopefully we can, make sure that the transit can serve where we think we're going to see higher density housing in the future. So I guess we didn't necessarily look at six to eight units in terms of the subdivision, the subdivision minimum density. We're really looking at can we create mixed use centers that could be served in the future, surrounded by more middle housing.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, so I got here. Casey Copcho?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Commissioner Pollak had her hand up long before me, so I'd like to defer to her.
Mr. Copcho, I called on you. You're welcome to speak or...
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Eunice, thank you as always for an excellent presentation. I was happy in particular to see the discussion on benchmarks. And it got me thinking all the way back to all those years ago from phase one of, of the project. And it's included in the report where we had the key indicators. So affordability, walking and transit friendliness, traffic and pedestrian crashes, employment mix and so on. And so I wonder, just from an accountability standpoint, do we have any specific measurable benchmarks related to those items as we move forward after the adoption of the plan so that we can look back and see, you know, here's how we've improved or, you know, we want to improve by 5% or just, you know, whatever number relates to whatever metric, so that we're tracking and making that kind of progress and we can, we can demonstrate to that, that residents of the city of those areas?
I would say two things. One, the indicators from the earlier phases of the project were really meant as a tool to see, are we heading in the right direction? Because the tool that kind of created the results of those indicators was very high level. It's really not meant to be used for tracking actually on the ground. But sadly, there's a lot of work going on at the state level around climate friendly, eco communities. And we anticipate actually a lot more benchmarks related, particularly to transportation going forward. We had discussed internally, you know, should we be setting those now? Should we be waiting on the state? Because we know the transportation system plan is our priority in terms of kind of next steps, we think that should be done holistically as we update that plan.
Okay, thank you. If I may follow up real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yep. I just, yeah, thank you. And, and that makes total sense. I just can't help in particular think of the, the walk transit friendliness or the traffic pedestrian crashes one, because we just had, you know, another fatal accident. And so just thinking through anything that we can do, and this is the auditorium, so I apologize, anything that we can do now to, to make it so that we can be specific and measurable with what we're, what we're trying to do and see in the future. So that when all of us on this Zoom call are gone, we, we can still have that kind of institutionalized roadmap of here's where we came from and here's how we've kind of improved. And so anything that we can do, I, I just highly encourage and applaud. So thank you.
Thank you. Josh Pollak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Eunice, you did such a great job and the whole, all the staff department. A quick thing is I was part of the, the climate zoning committee and we really took a look at this macro view and this marriage between affordable housing and climate control and, and density and the mixed use and things such as that. And so that was a macro, but one of the things that struck me when I reviewed the comprehensive plan are the stats and things such as not only our population and our education, but the, you know, the ages of 50% under 35, owner occupancy, 54, 46 renters, 30% of the renters, of their income gross, income goes to housing as opposed to 20% of owners. And that roughly 22/3 of the people who work in Salem commute in. So one of the things that, that, you know, I was taking a look at and, and I went back on all my smart growth things and it, I'm hoping it's not that late, but it's not only just the units, but the variety of units within the mixed use. And maybe if we can incentivize, because from what my research shows is that when you have a developer that creates mixed use but standard, every unit looks the same, that, that the government has to increase its subsidies for, to accommodate low income housing or, you know, for it to be affordable. However, when you combine both the smaller units like a studio, the standards and the larger ones, that when, when a specific unit has a variety, that not only can we be, be in a better position to provide affordable housing, but also instead of giving subsidies at the end, if we can do incentives to the developers to do that in the front end, I think it would be more cost efficient for the city as a whole. So I just wanted to put that idea out there and that maybe adding to our toolbox box for the developer is maybe incentives for a variety of unit within those multifamilies, within those mixed use. And that's all I wanted to add on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Josh. That was very interesting. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eunice, for an excellent overview. I too served on the, the subcommittee that was made up of planning commissioners and city councilors that kind of looked at some of this, you know, zoning and densification concepts. I thought it was really, you know, good to participate in that. Just a couple of comments off the, the top of my tongue here. There's a lot of balancing that goes in to some of the suggestions that are built into this. Specifically, when we're looking at the, that five acre or more, you know, development of a lot size that's five acres or more, there, there were, you know, organizations in our community that did advocate for more density than 5.5 units per acre. And some of us kind of wanted to push the number to six or north of six. But there, there are two things, you know, that are, that are also pushing is that asking or, or requiring for that 15% middle housing, you know, that is real. And it was proposed as either or. So by having both the 5.5 and that at the same time was seen as kind of a robust ask. And then the reality is with the inventory of land that's left, where there, where there is developable space, the topography of the land is, is challenging. And there are a lot of hills and, and just, you know, areas that can't be developed at 100%, 100% of the, the land. And I, I had said in the, in the subcommittee that my intention is to be a bit flexible with this and also to, I think all of us had said, we would consider looking at this from a net, not just like 5.5 units, but 5.5 units for developable land. So we would kind of subtract out the, the really steep hills and things that made that impossible. So, you know, I, I wish we could do, you know, 6.0, but I'm not sure how feasible that is. We did discuss that. And yeah, I guess my last follow-up is I got, I felt like I got a lot of good education on, you know, the importance of, of having more people, you know, live near areas where they can walk to or utilize the bus. But I, I realized today when I was talking to the, the city manager, I didn't get quite as much, you know, training or education in, in how more fill-in in the industrial and commercial areas will impact the, the transit system. So I'm wondering if there'll be any comment on that. I mean, there's not, you know, there's some changes in, in my ward, but throughout the city, like, is there a good person to talk to or how do we learn more about the impacts of, of that infill as well?
Eunice, do you have any suggestions?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question, but I, I think, I think you're asking for more information on kind of what we're, what we're proposing with commercial industrial and the impact.
Yeah, I mean, just that, so like I, we got, you know, all that, those many meetings we had as the subcommittee to go over kind of the impact of, you know, 15 units per acre on the core network and, and what it, what it is to have, you know, 5.5 acres a bit away. But I never stopped to think like, oh, what about, you know, when we fill in commercial? I mean, I know there's been some issues here in South Salem where people are worried about the, the potential filling in of, of things as they transition from, you know, a lower density to a higher density that aren't residential. So I guess my question is how, where, at what point in this process will we discuss kind of those concerns about, you know, the densification of what that does to our, our transit, transportation system? I mean, I know that's like a sub, it's, you know, it's one of the master plans underneath the comprehensive plan update, but is that anywhere?
Kind of. We, we are proposing any, we are changing, proposing changes to the zoning, right, which does intensify. So where there's currently, you know, single family land that we're proposing mixed use, that could obviously introduce some commercial uses in a single family area. Generally, we don't, we haven't really used a technique where we require a certain density of like commercial uses on land. It's, it's called a floor area ratio. We are, we're proposing that downtown as part of a separate code amendment. But I think in terms of like how everything works together and what the impacts are, that's something that we've talked about as part of the R-Salem project. So you're not far off to think that, that will have impacts. And we have, have heard concerns. And so we try to be very intentional in terms of not just putting commercial new zones and mixed use zones everywhere, but really finding the areas that, you know, based on previous analysis, those neighborhoods are not very complete. They don't have a lot of services and could benefit from them. I wanted to really quickly...
Will we see detail on, on what the counselor's asking about as we look at the transportation system plan interacting with the land use plan? I mean, how, is that how?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they'll be very closely linked, yes.
Okay. Counselor Hoy? Whoop, sorry. I'm sorry, Eunice.
Oh, I just wanted to say that Counselor Phillips, you were correct in that when we talked about the 5.5 units per acre, we, we struggled with growth versus that. We did propose and we did land on not including very steep slopes, not including riparian corridors, and even, you know, if there are spaces, open spaces that they want to preserve with trees, for example, not including that. So really looking at the land they're building on.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also served on that subcommittee and I just wanted to, to kind of characterize our work, although I don't want to speak for all of my colleagues on the committee. We, we, I felt like it was a really great process. I think for the most part, it was a consensus type group. We tried very hard to maximize the amount of future housing that was going to be available with still sort of factoring in reality. That was one of the concessions we had in terms of the steep slopes and that sort of thing. We, we looked at that in terms of, we tried to focus more on incentivizing growth rather than restricting, you know, kind of, we wanted to try to go at it from the positive angle of, of incentives. And that includes also building height, density, all of those issues. And it was, like I said, we, we had a robust conversation with the developers, the home builders. They were active participants in our subcommittee in terms of the conversation. And they certainly didn't get everything they wanted, but we certainly, it wasn't, it wasn't an either or. I felt like we came up with a really good mix of a practical solution, set of solutions. And I think the, the subcommittee did some good work with that. So I know nobody's completely happy and that's usually a good sign.
Not always, but I guess that's a nice way to describe it. Counselor Nordi?
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eunice, please extend my gratitude to your entire team. 230 events in person or via Zoom, that's an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of work. And I know for a fact that a number of those were at my neighborhood association meetings, which sometimes meet well after 8:00 PM at night, after you and your team have put in a full day of work. So my hat is off to you and your entire team for this extraordinary document that you have in front of us. And I also want to extend my gratitude to those of you from Planning Commission. Thank you for all you do. Your work may not be the sexiest work in public policy planning, but it is among the most important. So I want to thank all of my planning commissioners for the work that you do. So I just have a couple of comments in looking at the draft plan. In looking under the housing goals, I just want to underscore, underline, highlight, bedazzle all of the things that we can do to support affordable housing. I feel that this is a number one issue that is facing people around the country. It is a profound problem everywhere in the state of Oregon, not just urban, but rural Oregon, as well as struggling with affordable housing. And even though I didn't see the word tiny home come up anywhere inside this document, I'm assuming, Eunice, that when you refer to things such as cottage clusters and other small innovative types of affordable housing, that's, that includes tiny homes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I just really want to emphasize that I know that there are various tiny home models going around. And unfortunately, for people who are working minimum wage, people who are not making a lot of money, a lot of the single family residences around the city are just completely out of reach affordably. They're just, you're never going to make enough for a down payment on a $400,000 home, making minimum wage, just full stop. So I would just encourage everyone that tiny homes aren't just for low income seniors, although they have certainly been championed as a great option for seniors. I see a lot of people from different economic backgrounds, different demographics that are very interested in the concept of having a smaller footprint. And I feel that that will help us accomplish a lot of our goals. The only other question I had, Eunice, I think you said somewhere in your presentation that when you were conducting these outreach opportunities with our community, that people generally express support for having more apartment complexes than other forms of multifamily housing, right? But what my, my question... But what my my question is, when people say they're in favor of the concept of increasing infill, increasing density, to what extent did you also get pushback on the concept of, sure, I'd love to see more apartment buildings, but just not in my backyard? To what extent did you uncover that sort of commentary or input from the community?
We we heard that quite a bit after we released the proposed zoning map. Um, I think broadly, again, like you were saying, everyone is in support of more affordable housing, more multifamily housing distributed across the community. We did hear a lot of concerns when we started to try to cite where we think affordable housing or multifamily housing could go in the future. Um, we did a lot of clarifying that we're not saying multifamily housing has to be built. You, you, the city's not buying it, the city's not developing it. But it provides the opportunity in the future. But you're correct that we did hear some of this issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Eunice, and your whole team. This has been great. I also want to thank you, Eunice, for meeting with me before the meeting to answer all of my questions that I had after reading this document. It was really, really helpful. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and that is that I do see a couple of mentions about noise pollution in in this document, but not to the extent that I would love to see it a little bit more. Just a little bit more direct and pointed as we grow. I know that that's already a complaint that I hear a lot. So as we grow over the next 30 years, of course, that's going to continue to be increase and become more and more of an issue. So I'd like to see that really prominent. And then also light pollution is not something that we talk about a lot. But again, this growing community, we need to be respectful of our resources and make sure that we are doing that well as we grow. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that as we go into the transportation master plan update, I would really like to see an equity lens really focused on our bike and pedestrian infrastructure and really getting those things up to speed and really treating that as a priority as we move forward with that plan. So again, thank you so much. I don't have any questions right now. Like I said, you answered them all for me before. But just again, thank you to you and your staff. This has been really great.
Excuse me. Had a cat want to comment. Hey, um, Eunice, I I wondered, one of the things I've heard about over the years as a member of the Planning Commission, Counselor Mayor, has been overlay zones. What happened in comprehensive plan development over the past three years dealing with the kinds of complexities that had been created by, what, 20, 30, 40 years of city councils doing zones, then zones on zones with zones beside zones on top of zones? What what happened there?
You're correct, Mayor. We have a lot of overlay zones. And as part of this project, we are looking to simplify and kind of streamline. And so we're proposing to get rid of, I think, 18 overlay zones and really focus on our mixed use zones that are newer, that can accomplish the same thing without being a patchwork of overlays across the city.
Where where will we see that? I mean, how how as as folks who've dealt with these various kinds of zoning and, you know, problems that develop from stacking these zones, will it be primarily where we see the mixed use in place? Or are there other areas where you're you're taking some of, you know, doing? I'm trying to remember some of the terms like business office or business. I I just, there just seemed like there were a whole batch of these that were coming along. Has that been pretty well cleaned up and simplified across the city now? So as someone comes in, they're looking for multifamily, they're looking for mixed use, they're looking for a business development opportunity and industrial development opportunity. It's pretty clear what's allowed and what's not allowed at this point?
Um, yes, we aren't there yet, but we are proposing to get there through through the changes to the map that we'll bring forward as part of this package.
So we'll see that as this, as this evolves. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any? Yes, Counselor Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo like what everyone else has mentioned is thank you to your team, Eunice, for all the amazing work that you've done. And that's through my nonprofit. I mean, you, you and your team had gave several different presentations, not only in person, but also virtual. So really appreciative of how you've been able to connect with community members that otherwise wouldn't be as engaged as we would like them to be. A few other things I just wanted to briefly mention. First, I want I want to echo what Counselor Stapleton has said specifically about noise pollution in particular, especially in some parts of North Salem. I've gone and visited friends and colleagues in that area, especially along the lines of Fisher, Fisher Avenue. And we're sitting outside around 6:00, 7:00 PM at night, and we could hear the traffic just going by so loud that we have to kind of talk louder just to be able to hear each other. And I can't imagine how it would be like in the house, hearing that noise throughout the entire night, trying to sleep. I imagine some of the older people that I've, who lived in that whole house, it wouldn't bother them so much because they may not necessarily hear it as well. But then for like the younger communities, especially if they're exposed to it to that amount of time, like noise pollution is a real threat to community, not only to health, but also to public health. Same thing for lights in terms of light pollution, like being mindful of where we have lights. But at the same time, ensuring that there's there's lights placed in a way that is not going to cause significant harm to the wildlife that we have to worry about as well. Another thing too that I wanted to mention, I think, I think, I think it might have been Counselor Phillip, or maybe it was Counselor Nordike, specifically about tree canopies. I mean, I understand that, you know, we're trying to do that balance of how do we bring in developers who want to be able to build, but also are we ensuring that we're not just seeing places full of asphalt everywhere? Black asphalt, you know, on tons of parking lots, because that also adds to contributes to heat. So what are ways that we could actually put trees that when they're older and when the when the trees grow older, that they would actually be able to provide in a shade and covering? Where it actually cools temperatures versus that contributes to the heat? I'm thinking specifically, I think it's near, it's near downtown, near maybe 17th or 18th and some of those random older neighborhoods. You could drive by one entire neighborhood or down the street, and there's trees everywhere to the point where you don't really see the sun peek through much because of shade by all those trees that had been there for such a long period of time. So I hope some of those things are really taken consideration, especially as we move forward with this. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Slater or Michael?
Commissioner. Commissioner, thank you for the proposal.
Whatever you're doing. What do you, what do you have for this?
Yeah, I I'm wondering if Eunice can speak a little bit about how you think the comprehensive plan update is going to drive down greenhouse gas emissions. Can you kind of just link that for us?
Sure. I mean, I think you'll see a lot of different goals and policies throughout the comprehensive plan, but in in that specific topic area around reducing greenhouse gas emissions. There's several policies that, for example, are trying to really promote electrification, right, through infrastructure improvements, green building. There are tree canopy and increasing our tree canopy. But a lot of the work that we have been doing through the mapping is really to try to, again, incentivize and increase the ability for housing and mixed use to be located in areas near transit, so more people can take the bus or walk and meet their daily needs. But there's quite a, quite a few things in there. Would you?
Okay. Michael, was that it?
Yep, that was it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Daisy Gobel? Your mic's off, Daisy.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
I, so I'm really impressed by all the work that the that the staff has done to engage the public and provide opportunities for public engagement. Um, but I'd like to ask specifically if there's any demographics or groups or organizations that you felt was underrepresented or that you would have liked to get more engagement from during the process?
Um, and that's a good question. Um, I feel like we were really fortunate to have made a lot of kind of connections and relationships with different groups early in the process before we went into kind of lockdown. You know, we were able to talk to youth and seniors, people with disabilities, communities of color, renters, social service agencies. Is there anyone we didn't really get to? I have to get back to you. I'm sure there are communities that, you know, we have a really, really diverse community. And I I don't know if we necessarily engaged every single, you know, community out there, but I think that's a question. Is there anyone specifically we weren't able to reach?
The opportunity remains open, right, to comment? So
Yes.
Uh, as we, as you or or anyone can identify potential communities missing from this or neighborhoods that did not particularly, that'd be, I think, a big concern as well. Neighborhoods that didn't get as much participation as you might have wanted. You can still reach out and pull them in. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Commissioner Copcho?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eunice, the Commissioner Slater and I think several other counselors questions got me thinking. Two quick questions, or hopefully quick. Um, one, how does this plan tie to any any other maybe building materials, kind of a heat reducing capabilities like albedo enhancing building materials? Um, which is a very technical, wonky thing, I know.
What is it? What is it, Casey?
So let me, so essentially, the idea that black asphalt, somebody mentioned black asphalt. And so the lighter surfaces that reflect light and and heat more are becoming more popularly used to reduce the heat, heat, heat island effect, right? And so how how are we incorporating things like that into this plan? Or does that tie to another plan? So that's that's one. And then the second, um, I, you know, cottage clusters and duplexes, flexification ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. So think like small additional, smaller houses on maybe a current single family housing zone. Um, are there additional for like row houses for like the through and through style of row house where you would have like four, you know, side by side that you could walk up with maybe like an eight foot kind of greenery in front, that kind of neighborhood that we could really kind of diversify? As someone was saying, it's not just the the diversity of, you know, duplexes and quadruplexes and things like that, but really the styles and really have the opportunity for neighborhoods to create their unique identity of each neighborhood that so many cities kind of have. So that was two, two quick questions, I guess.
Sure. Um, I'll answer your second one first. Um, we do encourage and are going to allow more easily than readily townhouses or row houses, as you mentioned. That's part of the House Code 2001 code amendment that's going through the process right now. So that will be more common, I think, or or allowed on our single family land. Um, around pavement and, I guess, green infrastructure, we have goals and policies around green infrastructure, green building, reducing the heat island effect. So we do have that in policies, in the draft policies in the document.
Is there, Eunice, just to follow up on that, is, are there any proposed design review code changes or anything like that, building code changes that are incorporated into the comprehensive plan? Or is that a separate?
We are proposing changes to the building code. We can't do that, but we are, there are places where we're encouraging pedestrian family design, encouraging green building, things like that. As part of that mixed use three zone, which would be that new zone, there are a few design standards that we are proposing to, again. entrances facing the street, et cetera, parking lots behind.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Just briefly, I'm a, I'm a big fan of of mixed use. I'm glad that we're starting to move in that in that direction with this and codify that. And kind of related to that is this idea of the neighborhood hubs. I'm really kind of excited about that and the idea that it could create more, you know, livable, walkable communities. Um, and I know that at one point we had considered up to 34 different locations, and now it's down to 13. Um, you know, for those of us who weren't on that that subcommittee, can you kind of explain what happened there? And then if in the future, will it be possible to add more? And how do we do that?
Sure. You're correct. We are proposing to reduce the amount of neighborhoods and from before. Um, that happened because when we started, while there was support again for the the concept, when we started citing the specific locations where they could happen, even though they don't require businesses, um, there's quite a bit of concern from neighborhoods. And so we went back and looked at every single proposal, a proposed area, analyzed it, looked at, looked at the feedback, and then scaled it back to the ones that we thought really did make sense, had support, or in locations where, again, it could help create complete neighborhoods. Um, yes, in the future, we could always come back for like around two or three after we see how they go, see how they work, and propose new locations. And we're always leaving the door open again because people could apply for zone change if they have a property that they think makes sense. And that is not on that. They can go through the process and actually get a zone change to the neighborhood hub. So yes and yes.
Thank you. Excellent answers.
Anyone else? Okay, well, great, great job, Eunice. What next? What do we do next on this, just as we proceed?
Sure. So the next steps is to actually start the adoption process. We'll be coming to council, hopefully by the end of the year, to ask council to initiate the adoption process. And then there's, will be public hearings next year. So you'll see us hopefully by the end of December, mid-December, with a resolution asking you to initiate and kind of formally kick off the process. That's when we will, there'll be opportunities for, you know, public comment again, and hopefully adopt.
Will we meet again with the Planning Commission like this or any other groups? I mean, will the council be meeting in these special sessions in the future on this? Or is this it?
Typically, the Planning Commission goes first. We go to the Planning Commission first. They make a recommendation on all the proposals, and then we'll go to council.
So the the next, the next, or really the first action item on this will occur at the Planning Commission and then will come to the council. Do I understand that correctly?
Um, the first action will be to ask the council to initiate all of the changes.
Okay.
And then it will go to Planning Commission and then back to you.
Okay, great, great. Okay, any, anything else this evening? Oh, I'm sorry, Josh?
Um, this, this my, um, I wanted to address the neighborhood hubs. I think this is the most wonderful thing that could come out of our, that's new that, besides the mixed use near thing, I think the neighborhood hubs are just like so wonderful. Um, as as time goes on, I also was disappointed in the amount of areas that it was reduced to. But as time goes on and people see that these are neighborhood assets, um, I think then, and like with anything new, you start small and then, you know, snowball into something larger, and that's what I hope. So the beginning ones, as they become neighborhood assets, I think, I think that everyone will begin to realize that ah, if I want a cup of coffee, or if I need a, you know, if I, I need some sugar, if I need, you know, if I, I need a little gathering place, just to someplace away, I think they will find that these, these walkable areas are good, not only for for me, but, you know, for the kids together. Um, I had said that I'm on a corner and I have these two beaut, well, I had two beautiful oak trees before the rainstorm came, the freezing rain came. Um, and everybody from the skateboarders to the, to our neighborhood guy on his wheelchair, to just the guys walking the dogs, they would stop on that lawn and just hang out there. And so, and that's the corner there. And I just think of, if that, if we had a neighborhood hub there, I think it would just be so lovely. So I would like to, um, this will be my last time ever being in front of you guys because I'm going to be off of the Planning Commission and a couple more meetings. I want to thank the city council for giving me a chance to be part of this and being part of the comprehensive. But if anything, I would really like to say is like, let's, let's, let our neighborhood hubs be a shining star for our city.
Great. And thank, thank you, Josh, for all the work you've done on the on the Planning Commission. We really will miss you. Remember, you can take, you know, take a few years off and come back. This is, this is not the end, okay?
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Oh, yeah, okay. Casey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And Josh beat me to the punch. I was gonna surprise both her and Commissioner McKinley by thanking them, because I believe it's the end of his term as well.
McKinley is leaving as well?
Yes. And so while we're all virtually together, I wanted to make sure to recognize their service. They've been doing this for a long time. But Josh did also bring up a very good point with the, the neighborhood hubs. You know, I grew up in a town where the skating rink was, everybody got together, or the bowling alley, and all of these different neighborhood places. And we've, you know, we feel a lot more disconnected these days, it seems. And so I really feel strongly that these local hubs are gonna be those kind of strong neighborhood connections. And once people see that and realize that, it'll grow from there. So I'm really looking forward to it. And, and very much thank Commissioners Pollak and McKinley. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I think for those of us who live in the more central part of the city, Counselor Stapleton and I understand this idea of hubs, because there's walkable stores and all kinds of services just, just up the street. And I know I, I too, I was surprised when people expressed as much opposition to hubs. I, I don't think they quite understand what it's like to be able to go get a, you know, a bottle of milk at five in the morning, if you really need one for your coffee. It's, it's really handy. Daisy, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah. Well, the only question that I wanted to ask was, as far as the timeframe on starting this process before the end of the year, when, when should we expect to see the, the potential development code amendments and practical policies that we will be considering? When will be our first opportunity to, to start reviewing those?
Soon, very soon. The draft zones, the language for the new zones that we're proposing to create are already online. We might make some tweets to them, but the whole package, we hope to get on, online by the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, anyone else? All right. Well, thank all of you again, Brian, Josh, and who else is leaving the Planning Commission? Chain, are you leaving as well?
Uh, no, I am not leaving. I was saying that they're just the two. Commissioner, Vice President McKinley and Commissioner Pollak are the only two that will be termed out in December. Don't tip me.
Yeah, really. Thank you very much. Well, again, thank you very much, both of you, for all the work you've done. Eight years, right, Brian, as I saw your signal? That's really a long, a long haul. So thank you very much. I think Louis is probably the only person that really has done that many years in a row. I, I did fewer before I went on the council, so I, I really admire the work you've done. Thank you so much. And, and all of you, thank you for taking your time this evening. We'll be, we'll all be back at it in our own roles in the future. So I'm going to call adjournment to this and look forward to lots of meaningful discussion on land use over the next year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. We're going to close down the meeting. Thank you.